Welcome. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invite guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. So, first part of our... Oh, thank you. First part of our work session agenda is board communication. So, I'll open it up.
I wish I could say, because I would just bring out the...
Did you have something you want to say?
I guess I should say here, because this is board communication. So, I just got back from the Forest Trust Land Advisory Council Committee in Salem this morning, and I brought back a packet of the information that I got there for each of us and county manager, Don Boone. So, Teresa put it on the thing. It's just that copy of the working plan and then information on top of that of priorities and whatnot. So, that's what I have to communicate.
Is the 20th still open?
And also, ODF would like to come to Clatsop County and share communication about this forest management plan. And the Guy Boynton building would be available. It would be Friday, December 20th, from like nine to one.
December?
December. Yes.
Yeah, well, I can't...
Yeah, that's... Excuse me. But that's just when, when ODF is coming. They didn't really...
They didn't ask us?
Well, they didn't. That's when they... It worked for their schedule, so that's when they were going to come. And I think that we did offer that January might be a better timeframe after the holidays, but they're ready to come, so...
And part of the deal is, is this is a... This is their meeting, but we're hosting it here. It's not a county meeting. It's just, it's an opportunity for them to share their information with Clatsop County. And part of that, I think part of their thinking is that, although I believe this discussion and the forest management plan will go on for some time yet, the schedule as it is now is that public comment on this plan ends January 30th, and that they will have a public comment group meeting like January 14th, I think. And so, this is just an opportunity, if someone has the time to come, to listen to them directly. So, it's as simple as that.
And it's here, and what time?
They are thinking it's going to be from 9:00 a.m. to 12:31 o'clock.
So, I went to Salem on December 4th, and I think what I just gave to the county manager is probably pretty similar to what you did, only it has my notes on it from the meeting. So, he'll have that. And they also said at that time that the survey, I think I sent that to you, so that the public information officer could send it out with the county manager's bulletin, because they said, "Spread the word as widely as possible," and then it could go out in the bulletin, and it would go, "Yay." So, that part's gone out, so that's going in tandem.
If I could just add, I think it's good for really ODF to come and to present here and to kind of take ownership of the message and get in front of it. And so, I think that's a positive. And what we have said to them is that we will help support them in any way that they need. Obviously, a facility is one thing, but if they needed us to help facilitate the actual meeting, we can do that, too. It's just whatever that they need to feel comfortable, so...
So, who do you anticipate attending?
I know that it won't be... Because it's the holiday season, they're not going to get the group of people that you probably would get like if it was on a slow day in June. But, you know, it's an opportunity, and this is all about, like Gail knows, the public process of trying to get the word out and just do everything you can think of to try to spread the word, to give people an opportunity to come in here. So, that's all this is.
Anything else?
The childcare task force is going forward. There are two local leaders who are active and interested. They're meeting tomorrow. I can't be here, I'm headed out. Aunt Charlotte's turning 95, and she gets proper, so that's where I'll be. But the leadership is interested, involved, capable, moving forward. What they're wanting to do, some other folks in the community, was to not only look at what's here, but a proposal came forward to have the two hospitals collaborate on a childcare center. And still looking at how to have adequate childcare and deal with preschool, because this Student Success Act money is all, you know, flowing into the counties through the state. And it's a good thing to have extra money, but how does that translate into services on the ground for people who need it? Because parents need options, employers need their people to have opportunities for quality zero to three, as well as preschool and after-school care. So, the efforts continue. That's enough on that.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
So, the hospital would... Hospitals are considering this because of... For their employees?
Yeah, that was the idea. And I spoke to two hospital representatives at the Cedar meeting, and Donald Lemon was there, who's the CEO of Providence Seaside, and Zach, I can't remember Zach's last name. No, no, no.
That's okay.
But he said Nicole Williams would be the one, and I've reached out to her, but I haven't heard back. But he said he hears people requesting it every day, if not more often. And so, it's a logical 24-hour-a-day location. I've known it before in other places, other times. Making it happen, it has to... Somebody has to have the will and the money and the facility, and then we can look at how it all fits out.
But you're not talking... I'm confused. Are you talking about those are for the employees of the hospitals, not for the public?
Yeah, first. First for the employees of the hospital, then if there's room left over for the public.
Okay, and this is daycare?
Childcare.
Well...
No, no, it's a different... Well, it's not babysitting.
It's not preschool.
Yeah, because it would... Yes, you are correct. Yes, you are correct. It is... Because preschool is a specific slice of it. In preschool readiness, this is childcare.
And there's funding for this?
Well, that's what remains to be seen, because it has to pencil out, and can there be seed money to get things started and...
Okay. Well, thanks.
That's why there's a task force.
I see.
Yeah. But it's a need, and it's a hope, and there's a vision. There's a lot of data around and trying to match up the data to determine where the needs is in Tillamook, Clatsop, and Columbia Counties, and then get those local task forces working. Tillamook County is very organized and moving forward. Clatsop County is getting organized and moving forward. Columbia County is working on it.
Okay.
There's just a bunch of data. I could fill you with data for a long time, it wouldn't help, but we're working on the problem.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
So, it must mean Jack, who's the CFO that you talked to?
Thank you, that's it.
And that's the first time I'm hearing about this all, so I'll see if I can pass that message along.
Thank you, thank you.
The Fair Board is actually meeting right now to talk about the bonds for next year and what they're considering as an offer is renewing the operating level and then doing a bond for the building, so a capital bond for the new structure out there. That's kind of what they're looking for. They don't want to do the bond all at once, they want to make sure that they lock down the operating level for next year and do a campaign for the project in 2021. So, that's what they're considering, and they're discussing it tonight. They're moving this move.
So, what do they want to build?
Another building, actually, they want...
Same size as the...
Well, it'd be kind of an alternate to the main event area that they have there now, so maybe they can house different events. Certainly, you know, I think they've got demand for courses for some of these other...
Right, that's what I'm thinking, different kinds of floors, yeah.
Yeah, so the multi-purpose building out there. Yeah, that's what they're considering.
The old building, historic building that's out there, what's the...
So, they had left it open for the preservation...
Historic preservation.
And they didn't come back to the... So, they had kind of left it for them to come back with the proposal, give them, you know, interested, give them a year.
A year and a half, I think, is what was offered.
And so, they were expecting that to be, they didn't come today. So, I think they're moving forward with the plan to, for training purposes, or fire plans.
You're talking about the house that we talked about?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I was going to... Not the one where they had the chickens, this there?
No, this is the farmhouse.
And so, it would remain there, or would they would move it?
Burn it. They'd burn it.
They'll burn it.
Burn it, burn to learn.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Because it's a liability, it's a hazard.
I understand.
I mean, just if I could... There was, as you probably know, there was a long history with this building and a lot of different options. And the Fair Board had decided to go ahead and work with the state fire marshal to provide it as a training opportunity when nothing else came to fruition. The Historical Preservation Society came, and they didn't have a plan, but they just offered... What they requested was just time, time to evaluate it. And so, the Fair Board responded and just had written an email and said, you know, "We will give you time, but at the end of the time, you'd be responsible for the building," because it would cost the fair money to delay, because the fire may not... The fire training opportunity may not be there in a year and a half, so then you would actually have to pay to actually demo it. And so, they had basically counter-offered, and at that point, they did not hear back from the Preservation Society, so...
It seems such a shame, like those materials that were used for building backland, you can't... You just can't find it anymore, and to be repurposed for something else, even if they just tore it down and used the materials.
Habitat for Humanity or someplace, I don't know. Old, good old woods and all that.
It was open for that, and the flooding...
Nobody stepped up?
...had an opportunity to salvage anything out of it. And I know that John Lewis, there's an operations manager, the fair manager, did say that, you know, if you don't... If you take this opportunity, the training opportunity away from them now, you probably won't hear back from this.
Who is it?
The state fire marshal.
The state?
State Fire Marshal. State Fire Marshal. He is working with some of the local fire departments?
Yeah. I don't know why it wouldn't come back, but it seems like it would. They're always looking for that sort of thing, but where do I know?
But regardless, they didn't come, so they were really interested in it, put a plan together, and the Fair Board was ready to listen to them.
Okay, thanks.
So, I want to talk about fire again for a minute. I went to Cannon Beach Fire, because there's another interim fire chief, who was previously the assistant to Matt Benedict, Mark Heckman, I want to say, still learning. So, he's the interim while they negotiate a contract, because Matt Benedict is gone. There were two panels. Seaside Fire Chief Joey Daniels, Cannon Beach Police Chief Jason Skimmerhorn, and Cannon Beach Emergency Manager Rick Hudson, who's been with Sacramento Fire. The problem is that there isn't adequate funding to support two staffers, and the fire folk were united in saying, "The load cannot be on one person," but there isn't an adequate tax base to pay for two people. So, even though there are volunteer firefighters, there needs to be enough money to pay for two paid staff. And this is a problem all over rural Oregon with not having enough money to pay for rural firefighters, who are primarily volunteers. So, that's an ongoing issue. I'm trying to bring that up to the state fire marshal through the State Emergency Response Commission. I don't know how I'll be successful. What Rick Hudson recommended was that Cannon Beach Fire develop strategic planning based on six, 12, and 24 months, so that they could plan, as Commissioner Queeler referred, something that they could take to the voters that was logical and coordinated and built on itself. So, looking at how to organize the district so that it can communicate with the voters to get the support it needs to provide the services that are essential. So, that's happening at Cannon Beach Fire now. And the Archgate Falcon Cove Beach Water District meetings continue. I appreciate the reporting in the Astoria, and it helps us as a community move forward. It helps us see each other and ourselves more clearly, so that we can address the community issues. But issues of fire and water and housing and adequacy of our tax base are something that will be our concerns, I think, as we go forward in our exploration of strategic planning as a board. So, I just raised those, that they're out in the community now, and I'm glad we're going to be looking at them together in the new year.
So, I guess we should move on, unless, was there something else pressing? Okay. So, Fort George, long-term rural enterprise zone, that's on our agenda tonight.
So, Chairman, members of the board, as you are aware, Fort George has been speaking to Clatsop County, city of Astoria, city of Warrenton, and the port about their plans to purchase and develop the Astoria warehouse facility. And there was a community, it wasn't a community meeting, it was a joint meeting of all these different governing boards on October 24th. Commissioner Sullivan and Commissioner Webb participated from the county. And so, staff just wanted to provide your board with the presentation that was discussed there, and just go over just a few points, because this will be coming back to your board in January. I'm not sure about the exact date. It'll either be on the 8th or on the second meeting date. But basically, what they're requesting is a 15-year rural enterprise zone, so this is a long-term enterprise zone. And then, there's three facets to this. One is that they would have to invest greater than 0.5% of the county's total real market value, which for Clatsop County would be a minimum investment of $12.5 million, which they will be doing.
I reject my wife. Give him a little house.
You're excused.
Nobody else gets to use that excuse.
Wow.
How do I keep going after that?
I don't know.
So, the second is that within three years of commencing operations, the business must hire 35 new full-time employees, and those have to be maintained during the tax abatement period. And then, finally, by the fifth year, they will have to be compensated at an annual wage that is 130% of the county average. So, Fort George has met all of those conditions, and so, they're going to be going through the process with all these governing bodies. There is a public benefit component to this, and Fort George has been speaking to all of the jurisdictions about partnering with the community college for a fermentation program. And the second one that they're interested in is the Cathedral Park Trail.
To maintain it, or what?
They would like to see some improvements to it and have it connect even to some others. And so, they are interested in both of those as their public benefit. And those details are not completely solidified yet, and that's part of what's still happening right now. So, when we come back to your board in January, we can talk more about what the actual public benefit components are. But those are just a couple ideas at this point, so...
I'm sorry, what was the second one besides the Cathedral Park?
It was the fermentation program up at the community college.
So, they would sponsor it?
They would participate in it, providing internships and job opportunities. So, that's where we are right now. For the county, what this would basically mean is about $51,000 of abated taxes over that 15-year period. So, that's, you know, just over $3,000 a year of abated taxes. They would still be paying taxes on the land and building, basically, that is already there. The only thing that gets abated is the taxes on the new investment for additional construction and equipment.
It's really very little investment for such a good return as far as jobs.
And I think when you look at the salaries of 35 employees at 130%, I mean, that adds up to millions of dollars of additional payroll, and that money is spent in the community, so...
Do we have a dollar figure on what 130% would be? That was the only question. I didn't see that anywhere, even an estimate or a range.
Yeah, so, I'm just going to give you off the top of my head, but I think it would be right in between $40,000 and $45,000, so...
What's the... I mean, this is a program that relies on, "You get this if you give us that." So, the 35 jobs, is there... They have to report to the state or report to us on an annual basis that these jobs have been maintained and at a certain wage?
Yeah, so Cedar is kind of the sponsoring agency for the enterprise zone. So, there will be reporting, and they are required to maintain these 35 jobs during the abatement period. And there could be that they hire actually more than those 35. So, 35 is a minimum.
So, if some bizarre thing happened, and all of a sudden, they decide to lay off 34 of these 35 jobs, would they then... Does that deactivate the whole program, and they have to pay everything back, or how does that work?
I don't think that they would be paying back, but that would have triggered an evaluation of the abatement moving forward.
That would probably only happen if there was a severe downturn and people weren't drinking beer anymore, I guess.
They have to pay back all...
Day one.
So, they have to actually pay back from day one. So, I stand corrected? They do have to pay back.
No exceptions? No exceptions?
There's a serious guideline that they have to step over or fail to meet, it would be...
I think one of the challenges is, is that if they were at that point, probably the entire business may be in jeopardy. I mean, so...
It would stop them.
So, whether they can pay back or not would be questionable. I think that, you know, with these, there's, I mean, they're going to do everything that they can to obviously maintain their business, and this is part of what allows them to grow. Because in a business, you're either growing...
Or you're not dying.
Or literally, you're not growing. So, you know, so I think that, you know, if they don't meet up to the provisions, then certainly, there could be a payback if they're still viable as a business, so...
It sounded like the plans, as I understood them from the meeting, it's very possible they may add more than 35 jobs.
That's correct.
It's a big investment for a small county.
And as far as downturns go, my father sold beer. He said, "When things are tough, people drink beer, and when times are good, people drink beer." But I wouldn't notice. I wouldn't notice.
I think this is a huge risk for Fort George.
Yeah, that's a big growth.
Yeah, and things have been, I've been noticing in the Portland papers, that several of the, you know, the original gangsters, you know, the original firms, Widmer Brothers, for example, they're constricting. Fort George keeps growing, and maybe it's because they're more in tune with the market, maybe... I don't know why, but I see the risk, I hear your concern.
I just have, I haven't been part of the process of something like this. I just wanted to learn more about it, not saying anything in particular about Fort George. I just wanted to learn about the process.
There are so many breweries in Oregon, it's just mind-boggling.
Well, and when I say that it's risky, I think they would say, and Fort George will be here on the night that your board actually will take action, and obviously, they can speak to it in a lot more detail. But as much as it is a risk, I mean, they see it as a necessary opportunity, too, so... So, that's it in a nutshell. Is there anything that I've missed? So, it'll come back, but if you have any questions between now and later, let me know, and we'll get the right people.
Yeah, I just wondered about the salary levels.
And they did have a very good presentation prepared, so I don't think you'd be disappointed.
It's an intriguing story, just Fort George itself, so...
Okay, so now the North Coast Business Park update.
Where's Commissioner Webb when we're here, right?
Commissioner Webb and I did speak before. I came in Saturday, and her and I spent Saturday afternoon with each other talking about this, so...
I'm not surprised.
So, we came to you several months back and kind of gave you some different ideas as to what county staff was proposing with the North Coast Business Park. And so, I just wanted to come before you all with an update on that. Some things that have taken place already include, and I don't know if you've noticed it or not, but we've gone in and started clearing out some of the brush that's located on all the different parcels. We have to be careful of the wetland delineations and make sure that we're not encroaching on any of that. And so, part of this is taking place, so that way, the property, you can kind of see what you can get in regards to marketing it. Part of it is because there has been a significant amount of illegal activity out there, and so, we're trying to clear some of that out to make things a little bit easier for the Warrenton Police Department. And then, we also just need to make sure that we're, you know, if we want to be able to market this property and have somebody invest in it, we need to make sure that we're not just letting the wetlands continue to grow, we need to kind of maintain the wetlands that we have. And so, this is part of the delineation process as well.
How do you do that?
By maintaining the property. When you just let the property kind of go to brush and the leaves fall and decompose, then it's just kind of continuing to decompose the grass and everything that's out there, and it's going to continue to make the wetland area grow. And so, if you try to maintain the property, then you're not having all of that mulching and everything that's occurring, and you're keeping the property drier. I'm not an environmental person, but that's the brief of the way that Public Works explained it to me, so... So, that's one thing that's been going on out there, and we have the RFP to finish some of that work that will be going out hopefully tomorrow, and then closing by the first week of January. So, that way, we can get the logs that have been cut down, we can get them shipped, and then we can get them shipped out of there. And we will be using some of those logs, though, to kind of maintain a berm, so that we aren't encroaching on the wetlands that do exist out there already.
Could I ask you about illegal activity? That always is a concern. What... Is there anything we should be doing?
So, there's just a lot of homeless camps out there, and there's illegal activity that's been taking place out there. I think a couple weeks ago, it didn't happen right on our property, but it was very near. There were four fires that were set in the Warrenton area, and I spoke with Mayor Balancey for, and one of them, he thought was on the North Coast Business Park property, but it actually wasn't. But there's just been a lot of, and when they were out there, when Public Works was out there and clearing it with the contractor, and then when they've been out there themselves kind of walking around and checking out, there are some significant camps out there, as well as a significant amount of garbage, and cleaning that up is going to be a task.
This sounds familiar, doesn't it? And we know we've got some concerns about homelessness and what to do. I really want to see that rise higher to our level of attention going forward. I'm glad that we're doing that, because... I'm glad that, that we're doing that because if, what's that thing about not planning to fail but failing to plan? And, and the problems are on us and the results are on us. And they're not, they're not gonna go away unless we do something. So I'm, I'm hoping we have follow-up from what the Astoria Police Chief had, and my Chief Spalding was talking about and, and how that plays into what's happening here in Warranton on our property and other places around Mid-County and, and others. So I, I hope we can do that comprehensively soon.
Yes, we will be providing an update about the host work, which is what Chief Spalding came and presented on. Monica has been participating in those. And there's a work group now talking about the homeless liaison program and how the county and partners might be able to, to fund resources for such a program. But as we all know, one of the fundamentals is just housing too. And so that's one of the things we'll be talking to your board in the next year about is actually how can that county help facilitate just getting units on the ground that can make a difference? And there's a lot of, there's a lot of passion and a lot of interest in the issue. It's just getting us all to do our part in a, in a coordinated fashion that can make a difference, so.
And I've also served on that board. I just haven't been able to come the last while because of work. It's been over a year, so. Seems like it.
So some other stuff that's happening. We currently have an RFP out for On Call Relator Services. That closes on Wednesday, December eighteenth. And the purpose of that is to not only help us market properties such as the North Coast Business Park, but also to help us, should there be properties that we are interested in acquiring, such as for the relocation of the Public Works facility, lifeline routes, those sorts of things, have somebody who is an outside contractor negotiate those, those property transactions for us. And so, so hopefully we have a good turnout from that. We did speak with one entity. They contacted us during the question period. And so we're cautiously optimistic, I think. Things that have happened this week since you received your packet. We did talk to CMH on Monday and they are moving forward with purchasing the property that they currently have, the agreement with us that you guys extended the due diligence period until June thirtieth. So hopefully something will happen sooner than the June thirtieth date. And then I-
Where is that again?
It's the lot that, so Fort George bought the corner on the southeast and Nineteenth that runs along Inson across the street from Astoria Ford. And then Bugle Road is gonna go in just east of that. And then there's another lot that's on the other side of that. So it runs between Nineteenth and Inson as well. And it's approximately ten acres. And then we also did have a conversation, or had a conversation today with a gentleman by the name of Ben Doni, who contacted us about the property as well, the centerpiece of the property. And he's interested in learning more about that piece of property, so.
So there are gears turning, so.
Do you anticipate ever that, maybe it's not in the near future, but that having actually wetland parcels may be as valuable as land to build on?
From, it kind of depends on how you're valuing it. In regards to value, as to environmental value, there's, there's benefits to that. But in regards to value as in having something on the tax roll that's gonna be able to provide revenues for services, there's value in that, so it kind of-
So in terms of, you know, having it as a mitigation bank, you know, the cost of that continues to rise, but it's, we're not really paid for it in long-term like a tax building is.
But there is value.
Yeah.
But it's just not the same value proposition, so.
So that's about what we have going on right now. Once we have opened all the, the RFPs from the On Call Relator Services, then we will be bringing that before the board, bringing a contract before the board for you to approve and moving forward with that.
And I just think practically speaking, this contract relator will be busy with lots of counting 'cause we have the North Coast Business Park, we have the relocation of the Public Works facility. You know, there's potential, you know, evacuation route, you know, main line. And just the county, county has some, some needs. And then if you look at even the potential of land transfers or other things, even if it's related to trying to, to find property for affordable housing, there's just a lot of things that we could have going on in the next several years. So having a team that can help us do that, that are experts, just seems like the right path forward, so.
I have a question that is for tonight's packet, but maybe this is an okay time to ask it. And one of the thing coming up is there's a ten percent local. If, if the contract is awarded the lowest bidder, there's a ten percent. I just don't understand that. I think it's on the, the Brooklyn. It's one nineteen. Yeah, there's, if, if a local, and I didn't understand where that ten percent was going. Here it is, one twenty-nine. Yeah, that's, I didn't understand. For kind of like the privilege of doing work in our state?
Yeah.
All right, I didn't understand that. I didn't, I couldn't, couldn't figure that out, so.
So that's what resident editor is, is somebody who is registered and licensed in doing business.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, I think the logic is that they pay Oregon taxes. So it's a way of offsetting the contribution they make to the Oregon tax base that we consider that. I mean, that's what I've heard before. Okay.
Thank you. There's anything else?
Well, I just wanna ask one thing. So I keep thinking about law enforcement and homeless people and garbage and fires and illegal stuff going on on our property and it, and it just makes me nervous. And so I remember being told that we didn't have an ordinance with teeth. And that phrase has stayed with me. So I keep wondering if we need a, a different ordinance to deal with problem situations. And I'm gonna keep asking that until we don't have any more problem situations or we get a different ordinance.
You're speaking about homeless?
Yeah, well, remember the squatting situation on, I think it was G Street in Jeffers Garden? I, I remember hearing, and I think it's before you were here. Yeah, but what, but what law enforcement said was, "Our ordinance doesn't have teeth." And so that is like a burr under a saddle.
I think there's something at the state level that allows more liberty.
I think that it's always a challenge on law enforcement because it's almost compliance of the law. Somebody does it and it's what levers do you have to really deploy. And I think that's just always the top, the top of conversations, especially when you're dealing with property. So I, we will schedule a work session and we can talk about that.
And I'd like to have law enforcement involved, you know. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, absolutely.
But I think that's a worthwhile conversation and we can schedule something.
Well, and not to demonize poverty or to punish people who have no options. On the contrary, how do we address the, the problem in a way that's compassionate and still is effective for property rights and neighborhood livability?
Yeah, and I think it's, it's an important conversation.
It's huge.
It's also, you know, because it's such a multi-layered problem. I think that the Homelessness Task Force, trying to have a person directly working, that's one, that's one way to try to work on the problem, so. And that's a positive direction.
I think with all this, it's just many small steps.
Moving on?
Yeah.
The Board of Commissioners is the governing body of Clatsop County, all county service districts for which this body so acts, and as the Clatsop County Local Contract Review Board is now meeting in regular session, please join us for the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Sullivan?
Here.
Commissioner Neveker?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
We have one of our commissioners who is visiting with a new grandchild, and another one who's expecting a baby to be born perhaps this evening. Kind of exciting.
Let's dedicate tonight to new babies.
So, next is the agenda approval.
Madam Chair, move adoption of the agenda. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Agenda is approved. Before, before we have business from the public, we have a presentation for Monica Steele. Would you please come forward?
Monica!
Mine down.
This is your moment, Monica, that has nothing to do with the agenda, so thank you.
Yes, that's right. We want to thank you.
Oh! I was trying to see where I was at on the agenda, I didn't see it there.
Good, you're surprised.
Okay. Oh, well, thank you.
We want to thank you for your hard work and how you kept us moving through a transition. You went from Assistant County Manager to Interim County Manager, and you did it beautifully.
Thank you.
And you helped us with procuring our new county manager. So you went through several transitions, and you did it very well, and we appreciate your excellence.
Thank you.
And we'd like to present you with a certificate, and, Commissioners, let's come forward, we have our picture taken.
Should we have Teresa and Mr. Boone and Ms. Reynolds up here also?
No.
I can't speak for Ms. Reynolds.
And thank you, Teresa.
And also, on, let's see, January 3rd, out at the fairgrounds, our new sheriff, Phillips, will be sworn in. That'll take place at 2:00, and Sheriff Bergen will be there, and we want to thank him for his service and to welcome Matt Phillips in for that office.
The time in the public is all welcome to attend that? The time is what again? I'm sorry, do you want?
2:00 at the fairgrounds on Friday, January 3rd.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, now we come to business from the public, and we have two people. First, we have David Ambrose. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Well, I'm Dave Ambrose, and I'm at 1179 Jerome in Astoria, and I've come to see if you have any questions, but first, because we sent you all a thank you letter from we being the Arts Council of Clatsop County about your support for our arts summit that happened in November. And I also wanted to thank Monica, who was incredibly busy at the time that we were trying to get the financials straight for if we could pull this off, and some other issues that came up about policy and how our, how policy fit what we were doing. And she did a really great job of bringing us right through that with a big sigh of relief. And I also wanted to thank, on behalf of the Arts Council, Teresa, who is doing just an outstanding job every time I call Teresa and say, "Is there any chance you could do this for me?" She just says, "You bet," just like that, straight out, and things get done. So you have a great staff. So you received a letter from us thanking you for your support of our arts summit, which we are planning to have annually, every year. We learned a lot from what we did this time. We were kind of groping in the dark to some extent. We were really encouraged by the support we got for the community in terms of donations. If you look at the financials from this event, more than half the expenses were from donations from local businesses, from state government. So we'll continue that through the future of reaching out to the community for support and make sure we have support for events like this again. So if you had any questions about what transpired, I thought I'd at least give you the opportunity, and the public, to understand that event a little more.
Do you have a highlight for yourself for that event?
Well, I was encouraged by the attendance. We had, we of course rented the Seaside Convention Center, which is a cavernous place to have an event like that. We had over 100 attendees, which in terms of the Seaside Convention Center hardly filled it at all. It looked a little bit empty, but we certainly had a good turnout for it, and we will, we will have more next year. But the real highlight for me was there's nine members on this Arts Council, and everybody committed whatever they committed to, they got done. It was a great volunteer effort, we put a lot of extra time in on it, and I just happened to be the chairman for no special reason, and got great support from everybody on that council, so. And planning for the future, I see I've got about 50 seconds. As you remember, a couple of years ago, we did a year-long study of the economic impact of the arts on our county. The results were spectacularly eye-opening, and we will be, we hope we can do that again in 2021. So this next year, the Arts Council will be laying all the preliminaries to make that happen, as well as the arts summit, so. Here we are. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
I failed to read this. This is an opportu, for business from the public, this is an opportunity for anyone to give a three-minute presentation about any item on the agenda except public hearings, or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. So we have John Harper, but we're going to have a public hearing, so you may want to wait. Okay. All right, that concludes business from the public. Moving on to the consent calendar.
Madam Chair, move adoption of the consent calendar. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Consent calendar is approved. Now we come to Commissioners' reports. Commissioner Sullivan?
I attended the FTAC meeting this morning in Salem, and they, we are getting towards the point, the state is getting towards a point with their forest management plan. Public comments will be taking place in January, and so we discussed that. Department of Oregon Forestry is going to come to Clatsop County on December 20th here in the Guy Boynton Building and present what we were presented this morning for anyone that's interested. They, it'll be from 9:00 AM to 10, or to 1:00. And then they have, I think through January 30th, to submit public comments on it. And then tomorrow, I'll have my board meeting for the Northwest Senior Disability Services, and that's, that's all the, oh, I went to the comp plan in Napa last night, continuing the discussion on, on rule or goal four, and I'm, whenever I interact with the staff that's out there, last night Julie was there as a private citizen, but Gail was there as the facilitator, and Gail has always done, every meeting I've been to, she's always done a very impressive job. And I'm also continued to be impressed with the citizen involvement that are doing their homework and asking good questions, and it's just, I think we have so much to be proud of, and I just wanted to say that. And that's all I have today.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just add that as part of the county manager's report, there's a link to a survey on this forest management plan, so that if members of the public want to make input on it, there's, it's easily accessed there. Because I went to a meeting on, the same thing on December 4th down in Salem to listen to what they had to say. It's a good discussion. We're still working on the childcare task force. The Student Success Act is bringing a lot of money into the area of childcare and preschool education, so the coordination of existing opportunities for childcare, they're ripe for progress. There's a huge need in the community for parents, children, employers, the whole community. The schools are involved, Head Start's involved, employers are involved. There's a lot of action, and results are forthcoming, I hope. Arch Cape Falcon Cove Beach Water District extended the moratorium on new water hookups in our neighborhood of Falcon Cove Beach. Did I miss, did I miss say that? The Falcon Cove Beach Water District. Arch Cape Falcon Cove Beach Community Club is another entity that's active in my neighborhood, but it's different. So the Water Board heard testimony from interested community members. I appreciate the report.
And thank you, Teresa.
And also, on, let's see, January 3rd, out at the fairgrounds, our new sheriff, Phillips, will be sworn in. That'll take place at 2:00 and Sheriff Bergen will be there. And we want to thank him for his service and to welcome Matt Phillips in for that office.
The time in the public is all welcome to attend that? The time is what again? I'm sorry.
2:00 at the fairgrounds on Friday, January 3rd.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we come to Business from the Public and we have two people. First, we have David Ambrose. Please come forward. State your name and address.
Well, I'm Dave Ambrose and I'm at 1179 Jerome in Astoria. And I've come to see if you have any questions. But first, because we sent you all a thank you letter from we being the Arts Council of Clatsop County about your support for our arts summit that happened in November. And I also wanted to thank Monica, who was incredibly busy at the time that we were trying to get the financials straight for if we could pull this off and some other issues that came up about policy and how policy fit what we were doing. And she did a really great job of bringing us right through that with a big sigh of relief. And I also wanted to thank, on behalf of the Arts Council, Teresa, who is doing just an outstanding job every time I call Teresa and say, "Is there any chance you could do this for me?" She just says, "You bet." Just like that, straight out, and things get done. So you have a great staff. So you received a letter from us thanking you for your support of our arts summit, which we are planning to have annually, every year. We learned a lot from what we did this time. We were kind of groping in the dark to some extent. We were really encouraged by the support we got for the community in terms of donations. If you look at the financials from this event, more than half the expenses were from donations from local businesses, from state government. So we'll continue that through the future of reaching out to the community for support and make sure we have support for events like this again. So if you had any questions about what transpired, I thought I'd at least give you the opportunity and the public to understand that event a little more.
Do you have a highlight for yourself for that event?
Well, I was encouraged by the attendance. We had, we of course rented the Seaside Convention Center, which is a cavernous place to have an event like that. We had over 100 attendees, which in terms of the Seaside Convention Center hardly filled it at all. It looked a little bit empty, but we certainly had a good turnout for it and we will have more next year. But the real highlight for me was there's nine members on this Arts Council and everybody committed whatever they committed to, they got done. It was a great volunteer effort. We put a lot of extra time in on it. And I just happened to be the chairman for no special reason and got great support from everybody on that council, so. And planning for the future, I see I've got about 50 seconds. As you remember, a couple of years ago, we did a year-long study of the economic impact of the arts on our county. The results were spectacularly eye-opening and we will be, we hope we can do that again in 2021. So this next year, the Arts Council will be laying all the preliminaries to make that happen, as well as the arts summit, so. Here we are. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
I failed to read this. This is an opportu, for Business from the Public, this is an opportunity for anyone to give a three-minute presentation about any item on the agenda except public hearings or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. So we have John Harper, but we're going to have a public hearing, so you may want to wait. Okay. All right, that concludes Business from the Public. Moving on to the consent calendar.
Madam Chair, move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Consent calendar is approved. Now, we come to Commissioners' Reports. Commissioner Sullivan.
I attended the FTAC meeting this morning in Salem. And they, we are getting towards the point, the state is getting towards a point with their forest management plan. Public comments will be taking place in January. And so we discussed that. Department of Oregon Forestry is going to come to Clatsop County on December 20th here in the Guy Boyington Building and present what we were presented this morning for anyone that's interested. They, it'll be from 9:00 AM to 10, or to 1:00. And then they have, I think through January 30th, to submit public comments on it. And then tomorrow, I'll have my board meeting for the Northwest Senior Disability Services. And that's, that's all the, oh, I went to the comp plan in Napa last night, continuing the discussion on rule or goal four. And I'm, whenever I interact with the staff that's out there, last night Julie was there as a private citizen, but Gail was there as the facilitator. And Gail has always done, every meeting I've been to, she's always done a very impressive job. And I'm also continued to be impressed with the citizen involvement that are doing their homework and asking good questions. And it's just, I think we have so much to be proud of and I just wanted to say that. And that's all I have today.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just add that as part of the county manager's report, there's a link to a survey on this forest management plan, so that if members of the public want to make input on it, there's, it's easily accessed there. Because I went to a meeting on, the same thing on December 4th down in Salem to listen to what they had to say. It's a good discussion. We're still working on the Childcare Task Force. The Student Success Act is bringing a lot of money into the area of childcare and preschool education. So the coordination of existing opportunities for childcare, they're ripe for progress. There's a huge need in the community for parents, children, employers, the whole community. The schools are involved, Head Start's involved, employers are involved. There's a lot of action and results are forthcoming, I hope. Arch Cape Falcon Cove Beach Water District extended the moratorium on new water hookups in our neighborhood of Falcon Cove Beach. Did I miss, did I miss say that? The Falcon Cove Beach Water District. Arch Cape Falcon Cove Beach Community Club is another entity that's active in my neighborhood, but it's different. So the Water Board heard testimony from interested community members. I appreciate the reporting in the Astoriaan. It helps illuminate the process. We continue to wrestle with these issues as a community. We're also wrestling with revision of the, the comp plan revision. There was a meeting this morning of the Southwest Community Advisory Committee and that's proceeding as well. You'll remember that the Arch Cape Forest is part of what we're looking at later in our budget process as a community-managed forest. And that's an issue of great interest in that neighborhood to look at how, how we deal with issues of balancing environmental needs with water supply and the, having a healthy economy as well. Cannon Beach has a new interim fire chief, Mark, I want to say Heckman, who has been assistant to former Chief Matt Benedict. We thank Chief Benedict for his service and wish him well. It was part of the community panel's input that Cannon Beach Fire look at developing a six-month, a 12-month, and a 24-month comprehensive plan. I think the needs of our local communities for fire protection, particularly as they're dependent on volunteer firefighters, is going to become a more and more important issue as we look at climate change and expanding permanent and temporary populations. I think that's enough for now.
Okay. Thank you. So I would like to say about the 2019 Arts Summit, as reported by the Arts Council, the head of the Arts Council of Clatsop County, that this was a huge success. It was extremely well-organized, energetic, competent, creative. The group was mutually supportive in every way. This council through its, throughout its iterations with different council members has shown a high level of cooperation, enthusiasm, problem-solving, creativity, and ability to frugally and thoughtfully use their budgeted funds for the benefit of the arts, Clatsop County's economy, and business of the arts that adds to our quality of life here in the county. I attended the summit.
Good. How do you know that?
Yeah. Yeah. It was, I was, I was quite moved, actually, by their hard work. I attended the PSCC Public Safety Coordinating Council. And we got a report on the Community Corrections Biennial Plan. The state allocates 1.26% of the legislature's funding to Clatsop County for community corrections. This is based on our inmate population. We have 36,000 offenders statewide, 436 total in Clatsop County, I believe that's correct, 336 felony offenders and 95 misdemeanor offenders. Not sure that that, those numbers go along with the state. What I, I'd like to bring up, something that I learned at AOC in one of the meetings, and that is that we have, in this state, a lower incidence of violence than the nation, but we have a much higher than the nation rate of property crimes, considering our population rates, our numbers. It seems that Oregonians like to take each other's property, but it's linked with substances. And as we all know, we have a very high, high rate of substance issues. So last year in Oregon, we had more treatment for opioid than alcohol, so, issues. But we have limited treatment overall in Oregon and therefore our treatment capacity is inadequate. We are 50th in the nation for access to substance, substance use disorder treatment and the fourth highest in addiction. Since 1978, taxes on alcohol have not been raised. Five times more people die from alcohol each day than opioids. $130 a day is funded for treatment, mental health treatment. No, excuse me. $130 a day is funded for treatment for substance issues, where $300 to $400 a day is funded for mental health. To me, they seem that they should go together. So these are issues that I think it's beneficial for our county and our board to be aware of. And I know that our senators are aware of these and our congresspeople. So I think it's important to have a dialogue within our communities to talk about this. Substances are often a place where, or issue that people don't want to talk about, but it's costing us, costing our families. It's, it creates a lot of pain and, and a lot of just unhealthy behaviors. And I believe that we can be, we can, we can rise to the problem. We can, we can find solutions. But I think we have to be open and talk about it more. One other thing, this was interesting just a little bit. Latent schizophrenia can be triggered by marijuana use and meth. So that seems to be particularly true for youth. So it's my understanding that people can be born with a predisposition for schizophrenia, but there are certain triggers that can bring it about. All right. That's, I think that's all that I have. Sorry, not very cheery news. Oh, there is one good thing. Our pre-trial program is continuing to be very successful. And it is throughout the state and it's showing across the board to be highly successful. Now.
And underfunded, as I understand it.
Is it?
Yeah.
Pre-trial release program, that's what it's called. Okay.
Chair and members of the board, just real quickly, as you know, we'll be beginning the budget process soon, hard to believe, but we are recruiting right now for, for Budget Committee members. And so this is just a call-out to the public and or any interested parties that might want to serve on the Budget Committee, that there's applications available. And if they visit the website, they can be directed to how to apply. And I would say that just generally speaking, we have advisory councils and boards and.
Our Threat Senior Disability Services.
And so we need citizen involvement, so encourage folks that are interested to, to contact us. The other is that the Household Hazardous Waste Facility is nearing the finish line and the ribbon cutting has been scheduled for January 10th. I believe it's still on the 10th at 4:00 PM. And then the first collection will happen on the 11th, the next day. So I want to thank the Public Health Department for all the great work on that and the building and grounds crew team as well. That's a big milestone, so. And that's all for me.
I have a question about this. So we hear so much about, that recycling, we don't have viable recycling in this country anymore because China or other countries weren't taking our recycling. How, how does this fit with the household hazardous waste? Yes, I would appreciate it.
Mike McNichol, Clatsop County Public Health. So household hazardous waste is, you know, part of it's recycling, but really what we're, the goal is to get those materials out of the waste stream entirely. So the paints, herbicides, pesticides, lead batteries, anything that's a household hazardous waste product, we don't want them to go to the landfill because they're just going to leach over time and cause problems. But there is a market for a lot of those products that's not plastic. It's the liquids, the paints have a commodity, so it's about commodities. So they, they take all the paint, they mix it up. And in Portland, you can buy at an extremely reduced price, you can get gallons of paint, like it's kind of a ugly yellow, but you can get paint, as you can paint for stuff that's a lot cheaper, and it's good paint. You can also reuse and remix some of the stuff that they get back and they take it to the manufacturers who'd have it, so. So it's a little bit different, although it's not exactly like the plastic issue, which is huge and basically insurmountable. Despite that, this is about taking out a waste stream and finding, getting it into the right hands to have it recycled, reused. So there is a commodity for all the stuff we're taking.
Good to know. Where can a list be found of the items that can be taken?
Well, I actually have a list.
Bless you.
So we're finalizing all of our outreach stuff for the opening. And we'll have a brochure that looks like this. This is just draft. It'll be on our website, Facebook, all of our social media sites. But basically, anything that has one of those warnings, this is caution, poison, dangerous, toxic, flammable, combustible, ignitable, corrosive, and oxidizer, those are the things we'll take. There's an entire list here of, so I'll be quick. Light ballasts, pool spot chemicals, herbicides, cleaners, disinfectants, gasoline diesel, flammable solvents, art hobby chemicals, poisonings, items containing mercury, which we still see some of that, propane tanks, fertilizer, fluorescent lights, solvents, thinners, aerosol products, antifreeze, compressed gas cylinders, size batteries, car and rechargeable and button. So even your, the batteries in your cell phones we'll take. So some of those we won't take. We won't take medication, pharmaceuticals, or syringes, any garbage, or, and no asbestos at this time. So our list is pretty long.
What was the last thing you said?
Asbestos.
Oh, asbestos.
The only reason we don't take is our contractors are licensed to do it. So at some point, if they were to come licensed, then we would actually take asbestos as well.
When you talk about the cellphone, batteries and a cellphone, is there any inner overlap between, I know the dump here will take televisions and things like that, that's a separate stream than what you do, right?
Right.
Is there any overlap with those materials with what you do?
Luckily, we're right next door, so we're going to send one of the light goods, the electronics. And actually, essentially, we have oils and, you know, automobile oil and the antifreeze. We're going to separate those waste streams over to them. So we'll take the stuff that we get out and then have them drive next door and remove those over there, so we're not having a duplication of effort.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing.
I guess I might as well just stay here.
Yeah. Ordinance 219-03, or 2019-03, licensing tobacco retailers.
Great.
Excuse me. This is a public hearing on, on this ordinance for licensing tobacco retailers. May we have the staff report, please, and then we'll take questions.
Sure. Mike McNichol, Public Health. So as you know, we've been working on this for about two years, the tobacco retail licensing, with a focus on getting licenses for the 61 retail outlets in Clatsop County over the last two months. Leading up to this new revision of the ordinance that you have in your hands, we've removed the flavor ban, as we discussed as a group and as individuals. And when I spent time with all the cities, with the, finishing that discussions with the city of Arlington last night, so they've all seen the new ordinance and have very few comments. It was a little dramatic last night, but for other reasons. So, but from the feedback we got is we have a lot of support at the, at the city level. We also, I've had conversations with Mr. Edward, Mr. Harper, sorry, about the vaping issue. We did have a nice discussion and explained to him that we took the vaping out, the flavor ban out because of the, some of the issues we saw. And also because with the governor's executive order that came along during our process that was eventually stayed by the judge, we figured that that may have to go at a state level and they have to figure out what they're going to do with that. So at this point, what you have in your hands is a ordinance that will license 61 facilities in Clatsop County. Once the states come along and have an agreement, so that's what, based on that, that's what you have to look at tonight.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have questions for Mike McNichol regarding this?
I do want to point, I do have some handouts, if that's okay.
Thank you. This is a no-kidding ordinance.
So I'm a firm believer in our carrot-and-stick approach when it comes to regulation. So, you know, our real focus is trying to get education to our retailers to make sure that they are following Tobacco 21. And what you can see though, what you have in your hand is actually a draft of our training protocol that we'll follow and get out to all the retailers. And we will then run on one and go through that package as well as answer any questions, walk through facility, make sure they're all square, answer any questions they may have about Tobacco 21. So that'll be what we, we really want to prioritize education first, because, you know, the goal is not to zing people, but to make sure that we're trying to keep the materials out of the hands of kids. So sort of like what the OLCC does with the decoys and making sure they're not selling to the under 21 for alcohol, this is the same kind of process. So that's what that training manual is. It's in draft form, it's kind of rough, but it will be framed up by the time we're ready to go.
Madam Chair, I did have one question. Mr. McNichol, thank you. This, I've been a regulator, I wouldn't mess with you in a bet. So on page 111, 5B, I just was a little, I was just a little confused by what you were doing there, so can you enlighten me, please?
I'll have to have a, I don't have a copy of it in front of me, if you could read it to me, or if I could see it.
111, 5, 5B, grounds for denial.
Would you like me to answer that?
Sure.
Say yes.
What this is saying is that the applicant is seeking to locate their premises within 1,000 feet of a school or some other place that it's not allowed. And if that's challenged by the retailer, you know, if, if the county's denial is challenged by the retailer, the retailer can show with clear and convincing evidence that it is within a correct location. I mean, I could see that coming up when you're fighting over, is it 999 feet or 1,001 sort of thing? But it's giving some leeway to have the retailer explain why that, they shouldn't be prohibited.
Okay.
By clear and convincing evidence.
Okay. That makes sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Chair.
Well, we're having a public hearing first.
Oh.
Yeah. Did you have any more questions for staff?
I'm just happy, I'm glad to see this back in front of us. Thank you.
May, may we have the first reading by title only?
Sorry, Chair. In the matter of licensing retail sales of tobacco products.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Please come forward. Give your name and address for the record and you will have three minutes to speak.
Chair, Commissioners? My name is John Harper. I live at 335 West Marine Drive, Astoria, Oregon, and I am the owner of Under the Bridge Spirits and the Seaside Tobacco Outlet. And I'd first like to say that I'm in support of the ordinance which Mike has submitted on 2019-03, which prohibits access to youth and more enforcement. I do feel there's a couple of adjustments that may be warranted in the ordinance and I'd like to reference those. Eight, prohibition, permanently and entirely off limits to persons under the age of 21. Now, this is a little touchy one because it's prohibition B.2. This is a little tricky because if you go into any liquor stores, and I don't drink, but I go in and get gifts, there's always minors in those things because they can't stay in the car. And I know that's a little touchy, maybe with the OLCC, but they seem to allow it because I see it all the time. And I'm not saying that you're going to allow us to bring in a minor with a parent in tow, but I'm not saying a friend, I'm saying a parent. So that is something that I'd like to address, although it's obviously a sticky point. Prohibition C.1, 2, and 3 appear to address coupon redemption rights, and I am a licensed coupon taker within the county, and I feel that that, those coupon redemption rights are not related to youth smoking, and that entire C.1, 2, and 3 could probably be stricken from the ordinance, because it doesn't have to do with youth smoking. The administrative penalties section, suspensions, reivocations, first violation, 24 months, in 24 months, $500 fine, second violation in 24-month period, $2,530, and 30-day suspension of your license. There is no clause in here for diversion like an OLCC license would have, and I think you need to have, these are very stringent penalties if you go 1, 2, 3, and 4, and I think they're harsh without a diversion program in place. So 24 months is a long period, there are lots of rules in here, and stacking rules upon rules, if a minor comes into the building, and makes a purchase, and then there's a minor in the building, that would be two violations, that could actually be taken as stacked violations. That's a little technical, but I've seen it happen, and I wouldn't want to see that happen to anybody. We are owners of a business, we can't control our staff to the nth degree, there's high turnover in a lot of these businesses, not particularly mine, but there is high turnover in these businesses, and the owners, holding them totally accountable to a level of this stringerness, may be a little bit excessive, although I do appreciate Mike's plan to train us. And, so I wanted to address youth, but not to address handcuffing the retailer. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? I will continue the hearing to January 8th.
Madam Chair, is it possible to ask Mr. McNichol to respond to Mr. Harper's comments, just, sorry, Dr. McNichol, Mike, to respond, just because I'm curious about what he said, is it, is that acceptable?
Yes, of course.
So I'm a little bit of a disadvantage, just saw this, a few minutes, about a half hour ago. So the prohibition piece that he was talking about, the idea is to make sure that number 21 gets into the retail facility so they can buy cigarettes, so, you know, I think it's, as he says, it's a touchy subject, by leaving kids in a car to go buy their cigarettes, so that was something that I would leave the board to decide whether or not you want to allow that. So the next one is about coupons. So, you know, I, I understand his concern, so here's my feeling about that. Tobacco is a drug that is specifically for the socio-economic depressed. You see, the most use of cigarettes by those who are not affluent and are poor. So if by allowing cigarette discounts and coupons, we're actually giving the poor no reason to smoke and cause more, cause more morbidity and mortality. So if we're candidly concerned about social inequity, that's one way to guarantee it. That's how I respond. If we're going to allow the poor to have cigarettes at a reduced discount, then I'd leave that up to you, that's a moral dilemma, and it's something that you'd have to decide. My feeling is if we're going to make it something, if a, it's the same thing as, right, if we raise a same tax on cigarettes, isn't that also a burden on those who smoke, correct? So if we make it so the discounts are gone, maybe they'll choose, instead of getting the cigarettes, maybe they'll actually choose to go and have treatment to stop smoking. Back to your discussion earlier about addictions in our county, smoking is an addiction, and it's something that needs to be treated as well. And more people die from smoking than any other cause in America, still. 400,000 people die every year. So that's my argument for that. The registry of penalties, you know, this is something that we would, like I said, I'm more carrot than sticks, so we're hoping that at the time that we have this education rolled out, as you saw in those brochures, that we'll be able to talk to all of their staff. You know, we're not trying to do the zing, right? We're trying to have education. So if we do catch people with multiple violations, they wouldn't be counted as a multiple violation. We're there, it's a violation, that's the violation. So, I mean, if the board would wish to make the first violation in only 12 months, instead of over a two-year period, I'd be okay with that. We're just trying to make sure that we have some consistency in the way we administer this, that we have long periods of time between, because, you know, like in case of Mr. Harper, his has long-term staff, so if we educate them, and yet they still sell some under 21, I don't know what the remedy is, then have them go on diversion when they've just broken the law at the state level. The same thing with OLCC, they do have diversion, but if we're really trying to stop tobacco use by youth, then we have to be a little more stringent. That's my response.
Okay, moral dilemmas.
There are moral dilemmas, right?
No kidding. Well, with health, man. So, so this is really interesting, because you're looking at the example of parents bringing their children inside the store. Is it worse to abandon the child in the car, the infant in the car, or bring them in and participate in the transaction?
Well, you, you can't legally leave a child in a car.
Yeah, right, we can't legally leave the child in the car, but if the child comes inside, then the child is even closer to the modeling of the behavior.
Right.
Exhibited by their parents, kind of like parents jaywalking with kids drives me crazy.
Right.
Okay, so, all right, so I get that. Social inequity of smokers, yep, I get that too. And, and coupons really exacerbate the inequity, if I hear your argument correctly.
That's our argument.
And then, um, holding staff accountable. A diversion program, well, diversion, is diversion effective? How do we, how are we going to be most effective with this? And you're, if I hear you correctly, Mike, what you want to do is educate staff, educate the public, educate the business owners, so that the education really reduces.
The opportunity for mistakes, correct?
Thank you, the opportunity for mistakes, that's exactly right. So then, if you've done your education, it really should address the problem sufficiently because people know, and then if they break the law, they incur the penalty.
Yep.
Okay. I just want to make sure I hear the, the argument as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good work.
So this hearing is continued to January 8th. Next is the transient room tax ordinance amendment. And this is a public hearing on ordinance 2019-05, amending Clatsop County Code to provide for distribution on a semi-annual basis. May we have the staff report?
Yes, so as we presented earlier in the work session, when we established this ordinance, we decided that we were going to distribute the funds on an annual basis, and since then we've had some cities come before us and request that we distribute it more frequently. So after further discussion, we decided that this is something that could be done on a semi-annual basis. And so this is only for the portion of the countywide 1% room tax, the 70% that goes back to the cities for tourism promotion. And so at this point in time, we just asked that the board conduct the public hearing to, for the first reading.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, there were a couple of instances where semi was not.
Replaced.
Caught on the biannual, when I did the changes that were requested at your work session, and those will be back in the second reading.
Okay. Are there questions from the commissioners? May we have the first reading by title only?
Ordinance amending Clatsop County Code 3.28, ordinance 2018-07, to provide dis, to provide for distribution on a semi-annual basis.
I'll now open the public hearing, please come forward, give your name and address for the record, you have three minutes to speak. Seeing no one, okay, I will continue the hearing to January 8th.
Thank you.
You. Now we come to our business agenda. Item 15, the Blind Slough Bridge Repair Contract.
Ted McLean, Clatsop County Public Works Director, and so we're asking for your approval this evening of the contract with Roglands for the repair of the Blind Slough Bridge out in Brownsmere. And this is one of the bridges that we had spoke about earlier that had, that was in need of repairs, and so we did an invitation to bid, and as you can see, the low bid was Roglands, and, but we had quite a few bidders, which was good, and so we're asking for your approval for getting that bridge repaired.
So Madam Chair.
Questions?
No, no questions.
So I'm happy to see that this is potentially going to be done by the end of March, so this is work they can do in, in winter weather also.
Yes.
So I'd move to approve the contract with Roglands. Is that how, am I saying that correctly? Say that name for me.
Roglands.
Roglands.
Yeah.
In the amount of $319,666, and authorize the county manager to sign the contract and any amendments.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the board approve the contract with Rog, Rog-
Roglands.
Roglands? There's an N in there, Inc.
I know.
In the amount of $319,666, and authorize the county manager to sign the contract and any amendments. Is there any discussion? The question is on the adoption of the motion to approve the contract with Roglands, Inc., in the amount of $319,666, and authorize the county manager to sign the contract and any amendments. The clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Nebiker?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
The vote is three in favor, or were there any against? No, sorry, three in favor. The motion carries. So now we move on, thank you, to...
The last item.
The last item, Amendment to On-Call Excavating Agreement.
So this particular agreement, we have an on-call agreement for excavation. This particular contractor has a, an attachment for his machines that can do brush cutting, and so we hired him to do the brush cutting in the business park, and he ran over the contracted amount, so we needed to amend the contract so we could finish up the brush cutting.
Questions for staff? I, oh, go ahead.
Did he run over the amount because there's more brush than he anticipated, or?
No, when we hired him, or I asked him to do the work, I didn't look back to see what other work he had done for us, and we have a limit in that contract of $30,000, and so I needed to get the contract amended, just to finish that up.
Oh, I see.
So it was a mistake on my part.
Okay.
What is the nature of the brush? Is it trees and?
Um, it's, it's.
Shrubs, or?
Yeah, it's all the way down to grass, and he can clear up to probably six or eight-inch trees, and then just turn them into mulch and leave them right on site. Now, the, the work that we're proposing for removing logs and things like that is much larger than this, but this opens up those areas so that we can get that work done.
What type of trees?
Uh, there's all types. It's mainly spruce and hemlock, there's pines that are in there, and then just small shrub brush.
And there's no reason to leave any of the trees, just thin?
Not in these particular areas. If we're going to develop the, the site, we have all our wetland areas, and, and we don't take everything, but up to the wetlands, we've been taking everything up to that point. And so, again, that helps keep the wetlands from encroaching on the property, and then our process will be to use some of these areas that are opened up for fill sites, so that we can put clean fill in there and keep the area groomed, so that they're available for sale, and everybody knows where those lines are at, and we don't, when we keep those wetlands from encroaching on the property that we want to develop.
And we heard that there's been a difficulty with a transient population camping in those areas?
There's lots of camps in there, I doubt if they're in there now, it's raining pretty hard, but the debris that's left is substantial, and so some of these areas, we just have to clear the trees out in order to get to all the debris, and then in other areas, we're not sure yet how we're going to manage it because it's in the wetlands, and you can't take equipment into the wetlands. So you can't take heavy equipment, and, so removing it by hand is going to be an issue because it's all pretty hazardous materials, we don't know what's in it, and, and there's lots of it.
It's really a shame.
Yeah.
My dear.
Okay. So I had a question about the, you said, clean fill. Was I taking a leap that some of the brush that you're going to be clearing off, is that going to be used as fill, or is that?
No.
That's a separate process?
All that will be removed, and then when we do bring fill in, we clear all the topsoil areas out and then put the fill in and cover them back up. So it'll all be, as we do that, we'll seed it, grass it, keep it mowed.
Okay, thank you.
So Madam Chair, I move that the board approve amendment to agreement with Dennis B. Larson to increase the amount to $40,000 and authorize the county manager to sign this amendment and any future amendments of this agreement.
I second it.
It has been moved and seconded to, that the board approve the amendment to the agreement with Dennis B. Larson to increase the amount to $40,000 and authorize the county manager to sign this amendment and any future amendments of this agreement. Is there any discussion? Okay. The question is on adoption of the motion to approve the amendment to the agreement with Dennis B. Larson to increase the amount to $40,000 and authorize the county manager to sign this amendment and any future amendments of this agreement. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Nebiker?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
The vote is three in favor, zero against, the motion passes. Now we come to, thank you, we come to good of the order.
Getting Commissioner Thompson on the road to the airport is the good of the order right now.
All right, where are you going?
Riverside and Charlotte's, turning 95.
Oh, nice, okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Hmm, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great trip, Krista.
You know what, it's, it's nice.